Can the clerk please call the roll?
Winters. Eckhart.
Here.
Hamilton.
Here.
Stelling. Martin.
Here.
Sherman.
Here.
Hannaford.
Here.
Wallace.
Here.
All right, item four is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 16th, 2018. And item B is approval of claims in the amount of $322,470.43 and payroll expenses of $427,469.95. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Sorry. I have a motion by Mr. Sherman, the second by Dr. Hannaford, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item six, reports from boards and officers. Item A is the Alba Recreation Authority Board meeting on July 18th, 2018. Mr. Sherman?
It was a routine meeting. Went over the financials thus far. And then, let's see what's going on out there. We approved the NWSU soccer field and softball field contract. And Courtney spoke about the youth soccer coming up, which sounds like we have pretty good enrollment for that, too. Joe Don, can you add?
For that made, another thing I'd add is that we did award the contract to, the council awarded the contract to Roger Hayder for the grass baling as the highest and best bid when that was discussed.
Does the council have any questions for Mr. Sherman or Mr. Dunham? Item B is the Alba Board of Adjustments Special Meeting on July 20th, 2018. Joe Don, can you put on that?
Well, this particular meeting, it was about, the ledge LLC was requesting a variance to allow for four less parking spaces than the required 20, than the required 24, and a reduction of three feet in setback for frontage. And at 902 Oklahoma Boulevard. That was the only item on the agenda. It was discussed and approved. And that was the only action item.
Does the council have any questions for Mr. Dunham?
Joe Don?
Item C is the Alba Cemetery Special Meeting on July 25th, 2018. Mayor Chapey, would you care to?
The purpose of that special meeting was to approve a change in the ordinance, which you will consider as item number 10.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions before we get to that? Item D is the Alba Arena Authority Meeting on August 7th, 2018. You guys have anything that you'd like to share, Todd or Sonya? We'll have action item in the agenda regarding the Tiff District coming up. Item E is the Alba Board of Adjustments Meeting on August 13th, 2018. The action item on that agenda was not able to be taken due to notification deadlines. However, the Board of Adjustments did go ahead and meet and listen to public comments regarding the properties on Young Street that were in question. And again, like I said, there was no action taken. Joe Don, is there anything to add on that?
Not that I'm for sure right now. I do think that Left Frame has pulled this, pulled this or this variance request and maybe another one. And are making adjustments to the property so it's within the zoning requirements for an RGA. But I have not seen that yet. I don't know what, I don't know what that looks like at this town.
Any questions from the council? Item F is the Alba Airport Commission Meeting on August 13th, 2018. There were not any action items for the airport board that evening. We approved minutes and had reports and that was it for that one. I'm happy to answer any questions that council has. Item G is the Alba Tourism Tax Commission Meeting on August 15th, 2018. Mr. Martin, do you have a report for us?
There were two items presented to the committee. The first was the Woods County Fair Board came requesting funding to help with the fair. That was turned down. We didn't feel that the request fit the committee's agenda. The second one was Bonnie Siders. Apologize if I said her name wrong. With Alba Friends of Play, we approved that and that went towards improving Hatfield Park. We'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Does the council have any questions for Mr. Martin? Thank you, Colored. Item H is a Finance Committee Meeting on August 20th, 2018. Dr. Hannaford?
Yeah, we had several items we talked about. We reviewed a lot of large claims, just a few of those, general fund. We had oil for street repairs of $14,000. Airport had bulk fuel for $20,000. Street alley fund asphalt for $23,000. Of course, the largest, our construction fund for a water tower, which was over $926,000. And then, AUA fund, debt services of $68,000. So, pretty large, but again, having the water tower construction on there is the largest bulk of that. We discussed Young Street Water Tank Project, which is going very well. Looks like the end service date will be early September and then hopefully they'll be out by about September 20th. Our next project that'll go online is our East Sewer Line. Material should be getting here tomorrow and hopefully that project will be done by the end of September. HVAC project, which is an agenda item, which we'll just allow when we get to that one. We had, we just, we had one bidder for that. Replacement for sanitation department for one of the freight liners, that's also on the agenda. Basically, we had an engine go out and the cost of that is about the same as buying a new freight liner, so that's going to be on the agenda. The chlorination station project for our water well fields, bidding will begin probably after our Young Street project is completed. We talked about the swimming pool and some of the issues that were happening with that. Looks like obviously major issues that we've heard of. Trying to get some cost estimates of what that would look like to fix all the things that are swimming pool. And talked about just briefly some of the grant projects that we are still pursuing. Be happy to answer any questions.
Council have any questions? Dr. Hannaford? Thank you. Mayor's report. Busy time of year. Been honored to get to welcome groups, both Northwestern as well as the chambers welcome for Northwestern students downtown here in the last week. School's back in session all the way through town, all campuses, so that's good. Few things coming up, draw your attention to, August 25th will be Southwest Country Fest, it's going to be out at Fairgrounds. The Woods County Fair will be September 6th through 8th. September 12th, I think if you guys have been paying attention to the progress of the Vera May Home with the Methodist Church, they're going to have their ribbon cutting ceremony that day at the home. The also during that time is the Oklahoma Municipal League Conference, and I believe there's five or six of us going from the city of Alba to that conference. The Big Cruisin' Car Show is going to be the 14th through the 16th of September. And then, after our next meeting, we'll have, the week of our next meeting, we'll have the amazing obstacle course race again down at Hatfield Park. So, busy time of year. Homecomings will be coming up shortly after all of that. So, a lot of stuff going on, so if you can make it out and participate or support the folks that are organizing these events, however you can, be great. Happy to answer any questions from the council.
Kelly, I don't have a question, but the Vera May Home, they are looking for house parents.
Mm-hmm.
And this would be a good way to get this out there. Parents, if you have two children even, you can still live there because there's room for four more children then. And you can be a single parent, you can, you know, we just need someone to apply to be the parent at that house. You get a brand-new home to live in and a lot of benefits there. But we need somebody to be there. We need somebody to live there.
They have to be able to accept sibling groups of four or greater to reside in the house and take care of those children, if I understand correctly.
If you have two children of your own, they can only house four more children, so...
Four to six.
Yeah, so you can, you can only have six children in there.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mary. Item J, City Business Manager's Report.
Well, we'll start off with just a brief cash flow analysis for the first month of our budget year. Total revenues received across all funds was $2.2 million. Total expenditures across all funds was just a little over $2 million. We have, which left revenues over expenditures at $141,162. We do have $259,780 encumbered for future expenditure. As far as the manager's report is concerned, we are trying to finish up our Barnes Street project and our Church Street project before we move up to the Fifth Street Reconstruction. We had slated toward the end of August to move up there, first of September. We're still trying to meet that timeline. As long as weather holds, we ought to be able to get some asphalt down. It's a little cool. Makes it a little difficult to get asphalt over here, but we're charging forward. As far as the Young Street Tank Fund is concerned, we had our progress medium August 7th. The tank construction was complete. The pump building was installed. Pumps were set in place and the yard was piped before our meeting on September 4th, our next meeting, which will be September 4th. The electrical should be installed. The vaults should be complete. The tanks should be disinfected and should be operational. After, between the 4th and the 20th, which is the timeline for the, end of the timeline for the project, they will be leveling out the yard, applying sod and putting up fencing. As far as ordinance, we've, our ordinance committee met since the last, on July 25th. Some of the things that were discussed at that was the business license ordinance, which we're trying to get wrapped up. The nuisance ordinance, which we are just starting. Cemetery ordinance, which will be on this agenda. We are looking at updating our alcohol ordinance, which will be hopefully on the September agenda. On this, on this committee, on this meeting, today's meeting also will be the medical marijuana ordinance and the Alba Arena Tiff District ordinance. We did a drainage, we had some drainage study work done. There's some preliminary work to see what the engineering would cost us to get a drainage project started for downtown. The engineering and topographical surveys would probably cost, it was estimated to cost around $65,000. That is not in the FY '18, '19 budget plan. So, that will probably be something we will try to work into upcoming budgets. The Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment met on August 8th for Oklahoma Municipal League Training. I thought the training would go on very well. They covered the topics of what those two boards are intended to try to help regulate within our, within our community and how they go about that regulation. Then also, the, we did, I need to report on the swimming pool. There are huge deficiencies at the swimming pool that need to be corrected before it opens next year. We are trying to get an engineer from Kansas City that specializes in these old WPA pools to help us figure out how we can meet the health department's list of criteria to get corrected. And that criteria ranges anywhere from leveling the pool, because it's, because it's not level right now, to getting a chemical chlorine system that is automatic and not manual like what we do now. The, some of the other things I'd like to report on, you should have at your spot is the stability study. It's that, we need to stop working on that again this year. That, if we do the stability test study, go through our annual training, pass the resolution, we're eligible for $6,000 in grant funds from O-MAG. We do have some reports from O-MAG as far as, for the loss fund remaining for 630 of 18 is $6,913. As long as that holds, as long as we don't have any more claims against that budget year, those, those funds will be released back to us in September of 2020. And Mayor, council, I believe that would be my report.
I want to go back, Joe Don mentioned the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustments training that occurred. And with the Board of Adjustments meeting from August 13th, there's going to be a need, I think, for our Planning Commission and our citizens to, to look at how our community is zoned, all of our residential areas and whatnot. I think that we need to get to the, to figure out whether or not we have a situation where we don't want, or do want, or don't want, or how we want our areas of town to be zoned so that we know that when, you know, development occurs in our community, which we want development to occur in our community, that it's happening according to what the people of our community want. So, we need to start thinking about that ourselves, and I would encourage the citizens to start thinking about those kind of things as well. But it's, my intention is to start soon, I don't know when soon is, but soon, with some public discussions on what we want our areas and neighborhoods to, to look like as development occurs. So, that will be forthcoming.
Yeah, and just to tag onto that a little bit, the last time we did a strategic development plan, or land use plan for the Rock community was in the 70s.
Does the council have any questions for Joe Don? Item seven is a public hearing for the purpose of providing information, including an analysis of potential positive or negative impacts and answering questions regarding the proposed Alba Arena Economic Development Project Plan. This is the second public hearing regarding the arena and the economic development project plan for the city. I believe there's also one, there's been two with the county. The second one was held this morning. I have not heard if there was any public comment or involvement at that, that hearing or not, but we have an opportunity this evening for citizens, if they have anything, any questions to ask or any comments to give, we can hopefully address those this evening. To sum things up, we are considering the development of a tax increment district to help fund the arena that is, the arena authority's been working on plans for quite some time now. The way that would be set up is, is there would be a county portion that, which is why the county commissioners have been discussing this in their meetings as well, but that would be related to your ad valorem taxes or your property taxes. But there would be a sales tax portion as well that is relevant to what the city council does, so, and what citizens pay for sales tax. Essentially, both of these taxes are set up in a way that if the arena authority causes a positive economic impact, that they would be a partial recipient of some of that tax money that is received by the community or by the county to help fund their capital projects, the building up and whatnot. It's a 25-year tax increment district or, help me out, 12 million or $12 million, whichever comes first. So, if, if the tax increment district funds $12 million in 10 years, the tax increment district goes away. If the tax increment district funds $6 million in 25 years, the tax increment district goes away. And that's just, it is what it is. So, we've, through the process so far, it was, there was a project committee that was put together to help move the project proposal forward to the Planning Commission as well as to the county commissioners. The Planning Commission has reviewed it for the city of Alba and they've signed off on the project plan and have sent it to city council for consideration after we have the two public hearings. So, that's where we're at in the process. I believe wholeheartedly that this is going to be a great boost for the local economy as well as the county and the region as a whole. But we're here now. If there's anybody that has any questions or needs any feedback or has any comments, to hear those before we take any action. So, I would open up the floor. Sonya or Todd, you're welcome to say anything you'd like on the matter as representative of the arena authority and the work that's been going on. But I would also encourage the public, if you have feedback or questions, now's the time for us to hear.
On the list of the brochure today, I hadn't seen this before, but the sales tax increment, is this going to affect all purchases made in the Alba area as well as our ad valorem taxes?
The way the sales tax increment will work is that it, it will not be an increase in the tax rate. The rate will stay the same. Will still be at nine and a quarter percent. The model, the tax equation, if you will, is based on a number that's going to be chosen and it's based on a $40 a day for local participants and a $100 a day for non-local The theory that they will spend that much money in our community, the tax will be based on that level of spending. So, at 1% is what the Tiff District would get of the local sales tax, and it would be inside, all taxes collected for sales tax inside the city limits for the number of participants that participated in activities at the arena. So, if they didn't participate in anything at the arena, then there's not a number to multiply by to get them Tiff District funding. It's a little complicated.
Yes, it is. I can tell it is.
And I haven't explained it in a while, so I'm a little rusty. Essentially, if we have one person go to the arena and, for an event at the arena, and let's say they're from Alba, the arena's going to keep track of the participation. The arena will then submit that we had one participant from Alba participate. So, the city will then say, okay, we assume that that person spent $40 in the community on sales taxable items and will then send 1% of that $40 to the arena. The city will keep 1%. So, it will only be if they participate in the events at the arena. If they come in from out of town, it's going to be a higher rate because we anticipate people coming from out of town will spend more money in our community if they come to an event at the arena.
Okay. I also had a question about, well, it shows on here, where did I find it? That would employ so many people. Where did I see that? Well, what I'm actually wondering is if the arena facility and the people that are actually doing, you know, putting that together and who will run the arena, will they have employees to take care of the grounds and upkeep and, or will that be part of the city's?
It will, it will be part of the arena authority's responsibilities to build and maintain and operate the arena. I don't know if, if you have any further feedback, Todd or Sonya, on that one.
So, the arena authority consists of a seven-member board, and that board is proposing to build an arena and manage the arena. So, employees would be employed by the arena authority. The arena authority being a public trust. The public trust has benefactors, and the benefactors are 50%, Woods County 50%, City of Alba.
So, some of the city employees could be pulled to work out there or?
So, the city employees, if they desire to on a voluntary basis, or if the city of Alba desired to have them come help, that there would be no control of the arena authority over the city employees. That would be totally up to the city. We hope that they would want to. We hope that there'd be participation from city and county in the event that that was needed, that they would, that there's no mandate.
The reason I say that is because it seems that our city is just, as much as I love it, at times it looks very dowdy. We, I hate to have people coming into town to something that's less than what it should be and what we want it to be. Weeds out on the curbs of the streets and all that kind of thing. Just hope that the employees don't have to go out there and not get things done in town. Because we don't want people coming to something that we're not proud of.
No, we will continue to address our city's priorities that, separate from the arena authority's priorities. And if there are times that we work together, it will be for mutual benefit.
Thank you. Was the key word, if you can hear me every, was the key word, participant, not attending on the, on the tax, only if you participate or if you attend?
Participant.
Participant.
It's the participant. It doesn't count if you just go and attend.
That's correct.
Okay.
And what does that mean? A participant? Participating in something that's going on out there, such as a rodeo or that type of thing?
That's the way I understand it.
Or the, or people that go to see that rodeo or whatever.
No, a participant, a participant is somebody who leads and comes to our community in order to be in an event. A spectator is not... A spectator is not a participant.
So it has to be, okay, in other words, if it's a concert, people attending the concert are not participants?
That's correct. They are not participants.
Do they come from out of town or are they participants?
It's not about, it's not an attendee, it's a participant.
No, it's only the band that performs the concert is a participant?
That's the theory.
I've got a question for that, you, you had commented a while ago, explaining what the sales tax is going to be, like if one participant comes in, they're going to spend $40. You said the arena got 1% and the city got 1%?
The city's sales tax, it's not already designated for, the designated portions of the city's sales tax are for the hospital and the rec park and the scholarship at Northwestern. The remaining city portion of the sales tax is 2%. For participants in the arena, the Tiff district would give 1%, the city would retain 1%. We still get an economic benefit of having had an event in our community, and the Tiff district gets an economic benefit from having hosted the event.
Is this arena in the city limits?
Yes.
Then the city maintains the roads to it?
The city would maintain the roads. And Tiff district funding could be authorized by the arena authority for that type of infrastructure.
I have another question. I'll wait and see if I can answer it, Todd, but we can't. What's it going to do to our ad valorem taxes?
Nothing.
Nothing. Won't change it.
Good.
What's that going to do, as far as maintaining the roads in Alva proper?
It, like I said, the city's priorities are unchanged. We're still going to be working our plan to take care of the roads in our community. Those are presently roads in our community, so they are currently on our list of, but we have other priorities that are, obviously, we talked about Fifth Street and whatnot, so it should not pull from us being able to accomplish our priorities.
And the only thing I will address on that is that the, the project plan includes the roads that surround the arena and the bridges that surround the arena, and also the existing fairgrounds. The project plan equates to areas that the Tiff district money can be spent, okay? So if there is an increase in road size or a bridge or something that needs to be done, Tiff district funds can be spent to improve that infrastructure around that area or the existing fairground. Cannot be spent outside of those areas, but can be spent inside. Does that make sense?
But the county wouldn't have anything to do with it.
The county could have it, and remember, they're a co-befactor of the, of the afford.
On that same, on that same thing, is that 1% that the city's going to get, is it earmarked to maintain that, or is it going to just go back in the general fund? It can be used for Fifth Street project or whatever?
The city's portion of the sales tax would go to the, the general revenue. The Tiff district's portion of the sales tax could only be used
For that district.
For the project plan.
How many employees do they expect to have out there?
I'll defer.
Well, it depends, it depends on a lot of things. You know, at minimum, at minimum, I'm going to say three. Could be far greater than that. There'll be a, there'll be a manager, there'll be at least a grounds person and a general maintenance person, plus one.
Do you want to come, contact, third party contact, small businesses?
Those are questions that, that have been answered only in theory because it's a magical box at this point.
And what events besides rodeos and concerts would plan for better?
I'll defer to it.
Sky's the limit as far as what can be. If you looked at the fairgrounds and you, and you examined the events that goes on there, it would get that plus many more. We would have county events, city events, might be as small as a garden club, might be as big as, as a rodeo or a roping. Whatever the, whatever events that could possibly draw a crowd to our community and our county is what we'd be looking for.
Legal.
Crowds.
Well, thank you for adding to the discussion. Move on to item number eight, which is discussion in action on ordinance number 2018-003, approving and adopting the Alva Arena Economic Development Project Plan pursuant to the Oklahoma Local Development Act identifying and establishing joint increment district number one, city of Alva and Woods County, designating and adopting project area and increment district boundaries, deferring the naming and establishing the date for the creation of the increment district, adopting certain findings, authorizing the Alva Arena Authority as the entity to carry out and administer the project plan, establishing a tax apportionment fund, declaring apportion funds to be special funds of the Alva Arena Authority, authorizing the use of increment revenues for the payment of certain project costs, ratifying and confirming the actions, recommendations, and findings of the review committee, directing continuing apportionment, and providing for severability. What discussion does the council have? We've discussed this previously, and so if there is no further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance number 2018-003.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sherman, a second by Mrs. Hamilton, to approve ordinance number 2018-003 as stated in the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Again, thank you all for, for your feedback and your questions. I do think this is, has really great potential for our community and our entire area, and I look forward to what the arena authority is, is able to do with this all the support in place now. Number nine, is discussion in action approving ordinance number 2018-004, creating article seven of chapter 12 of the city of Alva Code of Ordinances, providing for retail marijuana establishments, establishing license and permit requirements restricting location, providing for conditions of operation, establishing permitted marijuana facilities, including commercial marijuana growing facilities, wholesale marijuana facilities, marijuana storage facilities, and marijuana growing for personal use facilities, establishing fees, establishing permits and permit process for permitted marijuana facilities, providing for repealer, codification, and severability, and declaring an emergency. Joe Don?
Well, recently, Oklahoma State's question, 788 passed, legalizing medical marijuana. When that passed, we needed to set forth in ordinance how our community was going to handle this, this new product, this new business through our codes and our ordinance, our codes and our planning. What this ordinance does, it establishes a business license and permit fees for both, for retail, commercial, wholesale, storage facilities, growing facilities. There is a different permit fee that would go along with each one of these, these types of activities. It also outlines where in our community these can be located, and basically, according to the question that was passed, there had to be at least a, could not be within 1,000 feet of private public school. We put in a library, museum, public playground, childcare center, worship, a place of worship or assembly, public park, juvenile or halfway house or correctional facility, any residentially zone district, or another medical marijuana or retail marijuana establishment. It also puts in some conditions of operation and that they can only be open from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. It would be required to be closed on Christmas, Thanksgiving, July 4th, and New Year's Day. With the commercial facilities, that has some other requirements such as fencing height and limitations of access. For wholesale facilities, it describes the, how the buildings need to be ventilated and the air filtration systems that need to be inside those buildings so that no odors are detectable off premises. For the storage facilities, it describes the buildings that, again, the way the filtration systems that need to go in for the air filtration. Growing facilities for personal use, it provides guidelines for that. It also talks about the types of lighting that cannot be exceeded, or the types of, and then it also provides that CO, the uses of gas products such as CO2, butane would not be prohibited. And then it also show, it requires for some inspections. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have about the, about that brief summary.
So basically, this is, again, as Joe Don started out mentioning, this is because of the state question that was passed in Oklahoma. We have obligation to have our local ordinances reflect state laws and whatnot, so does council have any discussion on this item? Can Rick, our interests are protected in this ordinance?
Best we can and what we have right now.
All right.
I will say this, it puts restrictions so that if we don't do this, there'll be entities wanting to come into our community and we'll begin trying to locate places that probably the citizens do not want, and trying to operate in the manner that the citizens of Alva probably do not want. So this is the best way for us to be able to gain control at the beginning phase of this and be able to deal with those issues as they come about.
There's no further discussion, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance 2018-004.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sherman, a second by Mr. Eckhart, to approve ordinance 2018-004 as stated in the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
And in order for this to go into effect immediately, we need to have a motion to declare an emergency.
A motion to declare an emergency on our ordinance 2018-004.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Eckhart, a second by Mrs. Hamilton, to declare an emergency for ordinance 2018-004. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Thank you, ordinance review committee, thank you, Rick, thank you, Joe Don, for the research that you did on, on getting this prepared for us to be ready for when this will start affecting our community. Item 10 is discussion in action to approve ordinance number 2018-005, amending article two of chapter 38, cemeteries with the code of ordinances for the city of Alva, Oklahoma, by amending sections 38 through 20, or 38, 38 dash 20 through 38 dash 23, and creating sections 38 dash 24, 25, 26, by replacing the board of trustees with a five-member board of directors, providing for their appointment and terms, establishing minimum meetings of the board, providing for removal of board members, establishing officers, providing for establishment of rules and regulations for governing and operating the cemetery, providing for hiring of a sextant and other employees, providing for annual budget procedures, providing, excuse me, requiring an annual report to the city council, amending section numbers, providing for codification, severability, and repealer, and declaring an emergency. Mayor Cheekey, would you care to enlighten us on the cemetery boards discussions?
Yes, indeed. I think there are three key issues here. The first is enlarging the board from a three-member board to a five-member board, which makes it easier to function, and board members can also feel more comfortable when they are, when there were two of them together. At the current time, two board members together makes a quorum, so it's quite, can get quite uncomfortable. The second premise is that we will have some input in selecting the sextant and in hiring supervisory personnel as well for the cemetery. And the third thing is changing the terms from a six-year term to a three-year term. And the way I understand it, those that were appointed during a six-year term will continue to serve until that term is up, and from that point on, they will be three-year terms. And so those are the three main points that I find necessary as a change to this ordinance.
Thank you. I think, for me, from where I sit, as far as appointments are concerned, that that's our only three-person board, I think that we, that we have. It is difficult to conduct business sometimes, or not conduct business, if you will, at other times in a small town. My understanding, this has been through the ordinance review committee and has come out favorably, and also been with legal counsel, and, and what we have in front of us is something that we can approve and accomplish what the cemetery board would like to accomplish and still meet all of our requirements. Is there any questions from the council members? There are no questions or further discussion, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance 2018-004.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Hamilton, a second by Mr. Sherman, to approve ordinance number 2018-005 regarding cemetery ordinance as presented in the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
All right, and in order for this to go into effect, we need to have a motion to declare an emergency. an emergency.
I'd like a motion to declare an emergency for ordinance 2018-005.
Second.
I have a motion by Dr. Hanford, a second by Mr. Wallace, to declare an emergency for ordinance 2018-005. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hanford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Item 11, Discussion in Action Concerning Resolution Number 2018-010 to Establish Investment Policy for the City of Alba, Oklahoma.
Mayor and council, this is a routine resolution we pass annually that authorizes the city treasurer and myself to determine investment, investments and develop an investment strategy. We'd recommend at this time that you approve this resolution.
Does council have any questions? I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2018-010 to establish investment policy for the city of Alba.
One second.
I have a motion by Dr. Hanford, a second by Mrs. Hamilton, to approve resolution number 2018-010 to establish an investment policy. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hanford?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Item 12 is Discussion in Action to Approve Resolution Number 2018-011, Adopting a Policy for Insurance Requirements for Special Events and Permits. I'll let you start this, Joe Don.
Over the past couple of months, we've been talking about the need to have, to be named on, as a co-beneficiary on event insurance, that is, for events that are held on the city streets and on city property. This is not a uncommon practice, it would, it would go to help protect the city should any accident happen while, during one of these events. This, this policy and these permanent requirements have gone through not only the committees here, but also through our liability insurance carrier and our recommended. We have also discussed this with several of the event promoters in the community. They all carry event insurance for their events. It would cost, in my estimation, and my research shows that it'll cost about, probably $25 for, to be added to these, these policies as a co-insured. And like I say, it just goes to help protect the city should an accident occur in today's times.
You know, it's, we have some events in our community on city property that are, you know, potential for, for major accidents, and you know, you hope none of them ever happen, but when you have a fireworks show, when you have air shows and things like that.
So Yaskatunga then would only be paying $25 for their insurance?
No, no. They would, they would buy their event insurance.
Buy their own insurance.
And it would cost whatever it would cost them.
Quite a bit.
And it would cost them an additional $25 to name us as a co-insure.
$25 is estimated based on his research.
Right, right, right.
And I believe in your research, you found that these entities were already providing event insurance.
They already, everyone that I've checked on are already getting the event insurance. So it's not, it would not be something new that these, these events are having to go get just because we passed this policy. It's, it's part of the practice in protection of their, their members and their promoters and their groups.
Does council have any other questions or discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve resolution 2018-011, Adopting Policy for Insurance Requirements for Special Event Permits.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sherman, a second by Dr. Hanford, to approve resolution 2018-011, Adopting Policy for Insurance Requirements for Special Events Permits. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Hanford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item 13 is Discussion in Action to Approve Back to You Marketing/Branding for the City of Alba. Joe Don and I have been talking about this for a while, but I've been, and Alex has been, Alex Mance, our economic development specialist and the chamber director, have been part of the process for which we've been developing the Visit Alba website, Facebook stuff. We also have been part of the process where we're trying to work with the weight finding signage projects and create a, I guess, a consistent image for our community. The signs that are up, that you've seen around the square as well as coming into town, are consistent with what's been put online with our tourism promotions on Facebook and on website, as well as what's being established in print materials that are being distributed throughout the state. The thought would be for, to ensure that, you know, the further branding of Alba as it, as we get out there and into the region and the rest of the state and other states is that, you know, it's a, it's a quick look, you know what you're looking at and that kind of thing. It's, it's a marketing strategy, obviously, and it's somewhat subliminal, but it's a little thing that we can do that helps ensure that consistency of messaging. You see in the, in the packet, the guidelines, these have been signed off on at the tourism committee level with the Advertising and Promotion Subcommittee of the Tourism Committee. And Joe Don, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, what we, if approved, we would take this, take these brands, this branding and apply it toward the decals on our vehicles, apply it toward letterhead, apply it toward the types of, the monograms and embroidery on the clothing that we, that our employees wear. I don't know that it would all be done, like for the replacement of vehicle, the decal on vehicles would not happen all at once, we would work to phase those in over time, doing, obviously, new vehicles that are purchased, we would have the new brand on them, but then some of the, and we would start with the more highly visible vehicles and start changing those decals first, but just kind of work them in over time. Use the information that we have for letterheads and stationery and websites and all the above.
Does council have any questions?
I just ask, who's paying for all of that?
Well, who's paying for it?
Well, I mean, if we're gonna do all the branding everywhere, I mean, all the changing of our shirts, your shirts and your, I know you do that, you're gonna do it through time as you need new stuff.
Well, like the uniform, for example, the uniforms, we would probably be addressing it now, our contract is up, we're, ultimately, the city is gonna pay for all of it.
Right.
But we would look at new vehicles, obviously, having the new branding put on them, new decals put on them instead of the old ones, and then just...
So it'd be a part of the normal budgeting process?
Yeah, it'd be part of the normal budgeting process.
We already paid for the...
We are, yeah, that's what I was...
Just get paid for a different decal.
But you're not gonna strip all the police cars and put all the brand new ones on there?
No, no. Don't know that, don't know that these decals would, well, I'm not sure how these decals would fit on the current police cars, but that would not be our, the start of our process.
So there's no money involved, because we're not earning any money?
No additional money.
No additional money.
No additional money, right.
And it would only be when we...
Yes.
If it's something that we put a logo on normally?
Right, it'll be the new logo.
It'll be the new logo.
Right.
Any further discussion? I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve back to you marketing slash branding for the city of Alba.
One second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sherman, a second by Mrs. Hamilton, to approve back to you marketing and branding for the city of Alba. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Hanford?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
And I mentioned to Alex, there are several people that played a role in helping to come up with those graphics, and I apologize for not mentioning everybody's names, but there were several, several people that helped along the way with, with all that effort over the last couple of years even. Item 14, Discussion in Action to Award the City Hall HVAC Replacement Project Fair Plumbing Heat and Air as a sole bidder in an amount of $298,000. We had budgeted to do HVAC replacement down here, and so it went out to bid, bids were open, a pre-bid conference was on August 7th, five local and regional companies were present, bids were opened on August 16th, there was one bidder that was Fair Plumbing Heat and Air. The big thing for council to know is that the budget for the, for this project was $234,000 with $58,000 contingencies. So we're essentially approving more than what we've, if we approve, what we're considering is more than what we budgeted. Plan is to take some projects off of what we've contracted and self-perform out to wellfield, if I'm understanding correctly, is that right, General?
Yes, well, we, there's some adjustments that we would make as far as some contingencies, we would shift some of that money around. The last project that we did was $9,000 under budget, so we would take that overage and apply it to this project, and that would get us to, as it currently sits, within $21,000 of the, of the bid, being able to fund this $298,000 bid. The, the idea would be that if we have to eliminate a project to do this, we would eliminate the well, water wellfield rehab project and self-perform that. There would probably be some additional, if we self-perform that, there would be some additional equipment we would need to purchase, but I don't know that, we don't need that equipment anyway. We would need, and that the specific equipment is a camera to be able to go down into the wells to inspect the piping that is underground. Don't know that that doesn't have a dual use, but we could also use it to maybe inspect sewer lines. I think there's some grand opportunities to help pay, purchase that. One of the other big things that I think needs to be aware, if awarded and if completed the way it is engineered, we would not be, in the areas that we are working in, we would not be able to operate out of those areas while the construction was going on. For example, police department, that'd be the first area they would start working in. The police officers would not be able to be in that, that area during construction, they would have to office somewhere off-site. We're looking at one of the offices that we have at the professional building that we think would be conducive for that. But it'd be just because of the amount of people that would be in there, the timing that they would be in there and then try to conduct business is not, would not be very cohesive. The same thing for City Hall. When they move down to City Hall and start the reconstruction there, the installation as it's designed calls for in-ceiling vent, vent duct work, and we would obviously not be able to be inside that office, conducting business with that construction going on. So the, the utility office would end up having to move probably into the same office into the, into the professional building right now to come, to conduct their, our normal business. Depending on timeframe, I don't, I wouldn't expect the police department to be having to relocate really more than, probably a couple of weeks. I haven't really discussed it with the Fair Plumbing, that's just my guesstimation, but with the City Hall side being a more comprehensive and where the bulk of the work is gonna be, I would probably guess them be having to relocate out of that office for about a month. Just, just guessing. I am working with Fair Plumbing to look at options that can possibly reduce this amount, but this is, the $298,000 would be a maximum amount at this time.
You know, I don't know if everybody remembers, but this, this was last January, you know, it was a problem. Pipes were freezing and breaking inside the building and it's...
I mean, if you think back just in the...
If it's 80 degrees in, in August, what's it gonna be in January again?
Yeah, yeah, just in this, just in this room, if you think back, we have no real good way to regulate our heat or our air, depending on the, any particular day, it could be freezing in here or it could be burning hot. So this, the HVAC system for this building is a, is a problem.
What is the, the professional building, is there anything that has to be changed over there, internet service increased or anything like that to actually accommodate City Hall being across the street?
I've talked to, I, I don't have a cost for that at this time. I have talked to one company and they have told me that it is, it is doable at, and at not a huge cost, but I have not got definite cost estimates on that. There would be some labor that we would have to move, because we'd have to move desks over there and we would have to obviously move workstations over there, but some of the thought is, is that our file server remains where it's at and we are able to access that via the internet and wirelessly. For some of the discussions that we've had, they would mount, you know, just kind of mountain an antenna on this building, mountain an antenna on the professional building and the signal would go across the street and we would be able to access everything here that we needed to access and on, at that location.
Joe Don, the medical chair that's over there with Dr. Hicks in that area, I know every time it rains, those lines are out, they have no telephone service, you can't call them and they can't call you. Would that be a problem?
Well, telephones, telephones are an issue. We, I've had some discussions with the tenants over there. AT&amp;T has come in and done, reworked some of the, the banks back there that has not been at the end. Uh, AT&amp;T has come in and done, reworked some of the, the banks back there that has not been at the issue recently. Not saying that it won't be an issue in the future. Um, but we do have, one of the things that we have been looking at also in, that is in our budget is a, uh, new phone system. If we did that in conjunction with this move, there, there wouldn't be any disruption. Most of our phone would be via the internet. Um, and as a side note, the, um, I've been, I've been told that it can be done for a lot less than the amount that we have budgeted. But we haven't looked at that real closely yet either.
Um, I was looking for timeframe.
Um, see, we would be looking at starting, if the bid is awarded tonight, they would probably, we would, we would sit down and, uh, discuss with the, uh, with Fair Plumbing, uh, beginning date, ending date. And if I remember right, the bid called for, and I don't have all those documents in here, but if I remember right, the bid called for, uh, 180-day completion time, um, which is, I, which is a doable, whi- which is highly, uh, very doable for this type of project. I, I would expect that they would start, uh, get started, if it's awarded tonight, they would get started within the next six weeks. That would give them six weeks to start getting, uh, materials in. Uh, we would, we would probably, we would stage the material that comes in on the north side of the police station. We would block off those, um, those parking spaces where they would not be used. And that's where the equipment would be staged at this time. Any other questions?
Does council have any other questions? Um, this is the first time in a while that we've only received one bid on any, any of our projects. Joe Don had indicated that based on the conversations at the, the pre-bid meeting, that, uh, it may not be likely that we get, if we did rebid this, it may not be likely that we get any more bids next time. Or that they'd be less.
So that they'd be less, yeah. The, uh, the bidders that, um, were at the pre-bid conference, um, stated workload and other issues is the reason why they would not, why they did not submit a bid.
I, I think even though it's more than we budgeted, I, I think we probably need to approve it, but, uh, that's council vote, so.
What are we going to mess here? Because I'm, I'm at, I'm, uh, I'm on the persuasion of we're $60,000 over budget and we don't know the cost of moving across the street. I'd like to know what the total cost of this is going to be before I vote to say yes. We're already $60,000 over budget, it's going to cost us another 10 to 20 to get across the street. That's a lot of extra money that we did not budget on a tight budget in the first place.
Then, I mean, the, 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 uh, options that we have would be, um.
We table it?
We, one, to approve it. Um, two, we could, um, uh, deny it and rebid. Uh, three, table it and maybe find out some of the specifics of the questions that you're asking about and bring it back at the September meeting. Uh, we bring it back at the September meeting. Um, some of the concerns that I would have would be getting it going and getting it started. And getting, my concern is getting the police department finished before it freezes. Uh, last year, we did have water pipes break, um, had a lot of additional expense that went into that to repair those water lines, get heat into the building, um, to, to keep lines from freezing. That's my biggest concern. Uh, we can always have a special meeting to address just this before the September, uh, the September meeting also.
Oh, we can take you to get answers to the questions on it.
Um.
We're going to, we're going to have those costs anyways, aren't we?
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
I mean, whether we wait and get another bid, we're still going to have the cost of moving across the.
But we will, but we would know it, we would know, have a more definite answer of what that cost is.
I'd like, I mean, my questions would be, if we tabled it, would be what the total cost of moving across would be and where we're going to make that cost up. I know that we've talked about a couple of things that, that we would make the cost up, but that still didn't make up the full amount that we're going to be out. And that didn't include the amount that we're going to be out for moving across the street.
The low hanging fruit, in my opinion, is we did budget a half a million dollars for economic development, which could be reduced. I mean, it's available with budget limit.
And as far as the timeline to find out the, some more definite cost, I, I would start making some phone calls tomorrow. It really depends on how quickly the vendors or the people I call get back with me.
We just had to Fair Plumbing do a new air conditioner at the store and it took them almost three and a half weeks to get it in. So the, the longer we put it off, the longer, I mean, it's going to take them.
We, we, we didn't just spend a six week delivery, six week delivery time on equipment on this.
And I've got other jobs already started that they're going to have to finish. Yeah, it's, it's getting pretty.
We didn't start.
So, Joe Don told us what our options are. Approve, deny, rebid, or table. Um, there's valid points to be made for all of that. How would the council like to proceed? I would entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion to table action on city hall HVAC replacement project to Fair Plumbing. Awarding a contract for plumbing is still bitter until more information can be gathered. I'll second.
Motion to table, item number 14 regarding the city hall HVAC replacement project. Again, motion to table by Mr. Sherman, second by Mr. Wallace. Is there any further discussion?
So Joe Don, as soon as you get that information, we could call a special meeting and vote on this.
Yes, a special meeting could be called to address it earlier than the next, uh, regularly scheduled council meeting.
That's what we need to do.
Is there any further discussion?
Am I allowed to speak?
Sure.
Okay. Um, one thing I think that we have to, um, also look in consideration is there's asbestos there. You know, we can't start a lot of these places until that gets removed. So, I know, you know, you want to get all this stuff done over there. Um, so that's just another consideration that's out of my control, out of Fair Plumbing's control. Um, we sure want to do this for the city. I think we can, I think, uh, um, we really want the contract, so wait for your special meeting, but that's another consideration to look at.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hanifert?
No.
Martin?
No.
Hamilton?
No.
Eckhart?
No.
All right, the motion to table did not pass. We may take additional action here to approve, deny, or whatever. We'd entertain a motion.
I would like a motion to award the city HVAC replacement project to Fair Plumbing, heat and air as the sole bidder in the amount of 298,000.
I'll second. Have a motion by Dr. Hanifert and second by Mr. Eckhart to award the city hall HVAC replacement project to Fair Plumbing, heat and air as the sole bidder in the amount of 298,000. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hanifert?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Wallace?
No.
Sherman?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
All right. Is that all you need?
But you'll get those quotes for us anyway, I mean.
Yes, I'll get that anyway and let you know what it is.
So the motion carries, uh, business manager will get us information on the additional cost. Uh, we will have control over those to some extent. Item 15 is discussion and action on approval of lease at the transfer site to Zap LCI LLC in the amount of 1653 an acre. I believe this was on last month's agenda.
And we, because of the top of graphic layer, we couldn't act on it. This is, um, they were the highest bidder for this project, for this, for this acreage, um.
So I would entertain a motion to approve this lease.
Motion to approve the lease, the transfer site to Zap LCI LLC in the amount of 1653 per acre. $16.53 per acre.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Sherman and second by Dr. Hanifert to approve the lease, the transfer site to Zap LCI LLC in the amount of $16.53 an acre. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Hanifert?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item 16, discussion and action on negotiations with IFF Local 3782, Alba, Oklahoma, fiscal year 2018, 2019 contract. Ms. Hamilton, would you have anything to?
Report?
Oh, they, uh, well, I didn't get to do the last one myself. In the hospital. But, uh, the negotiations went well, both sides worked it out, um.
Union has agreed to sign the contract.
They agreed to sign and so everything's on the go for a contract with our, uh, fire department.
With that being the case, I'd entertain a motion.
All right, same move.
I'll say what you mean.
Okay, yes. I make a motion to, uh, uh, pass the negotiations with IFF Local 3782, Alba, Oklahoma, fiscal year 2018 to 2019 contract.
Second.
Before you did that, can we specify that you're moving to approve?
Approve it, I'm sorry, yes, to approve the negotiations.
Second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Hamilton and second by Mr. Sherman to approve the firefighters' union contract for 2018, 2019. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hanifert?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes. Item 17 is discussion and action to authorize the mayor to sign bulk water contract with rural water district number three. This has been, uh, in the works, uh, a few months now, uh, with, uh, terms being sent out to all of our water districts for, uh, their, uh, the rates that they'll have with the city of Alba. The, uh, in my understanding, the, uh, district three and district four, both items here to approve and they have both, have they signed them or have they?
They have, they have, uh, voted on and signed, we do have a copy of the signature, uh, the signed contract. Uh, one of the things I would point out on these, one of the big changes in this is that it does move, uh, both of these, um, entities to their respective governmental school rate, um, that was passed by the council, uh, a couple of years ago. It does allow for, um, in addition to the, uh, increase this year, uh, right now, it does allow for increases, uh, in 2019 and 2020 based upon what the council approved last year.
So these rates hadn't been, uh, or the, the, uh, contract had been in effect from rural water district three since 1976. This would, uh, certainly bring this up to date, uh, with only had minor changes in between then and now. And it, it gives us an option for ensuring that their rates stay along the line with our government rate moving forward, so.
Um, one of the other big things that I think I should mention that I just remembered is that it does, um, require the districts to report monthly, uh, their water loss for the previous month. Um, so that we have, uh, the same way as we track our water losses, we were able to help, um, track, you know, we are kept in, we are kept, uh, in the loop on what their water loss may be.
Any questions regarding the rural district, rural water district contracts? I would entertain a motion.
Make motion to authorize the mayor to sign bulk water contract with rural water district number three.
Second.
Have a motion by Dr. Hanifert and second by Mrs. Hamilton to approve or authorize the mayor to sign bulk water contract with rural di- water district number three. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hanifert?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item 18, same thing. It's, uh, same contract essentially, uh, except rural water district four, I don't believe, uh, their meter is not outside the.
Yeah, they're an outside rate.
So they're an outside the city limits rate, still governmental rate, but outside the city limits. Are there any questions on district four's contract? Not, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the mayor to, uh, motion to authorize the mayor to sign bulk water contract through a district, uh, water district number four.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Sherman and second by Dr. Hanifert to authorize the mayor to sign bulk water contract with rural water district number four. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Hanifert?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Item 19, discussion and action on the appointment of Tyler Mance to the Alba Board of Adjustments for an Unexpired Term Ending June 2020. Um, we had a vacancy on the board of adjustments with resignation of Haila Simon. Um, I have, uh, spoken with Tyler Mance regarding appointment to this, uh, board and actually he did participate in the training for the board of adjustments that occurred, uh, earlier this month.
And he sat through the meeting the other night with everybody's discussion on it.
And he, he did, he, uh, he went through all that and he's still willing to serve.
He's still willing to serve.
So.
I don't know why.
Um, I therefore recommend his appointment. Would entertain a motion.
I'd make the motion to appoint Tyler Mance to the Alba Board of Adjustments for an Unexpired Term Ending June of 2020.
Second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Hamilton and second by Mr. Wallace to appoint Tyler Mance to the Alba Board of Adjustments for an Unexpired Term Ending June 2020. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hanifert?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
I would like to say on that, that I really appreciate, uh, Haila's service to that board. She, uh, has been, uh, you know, a, a strong advocate for the city in that capacity and, uh, I'm sure she'll continue to do good things for our community in other capacities. Item 20 is remarks and inquiries by citizens. Um, if any of the citizens would like to make comment, we'll, uh, invite you to come to the podium and state your name and, and give you a couple of minutes to, to speak.
I would like to speak, but I just want to sit here.
Okay.
Uh, I'm sort of replacing Jewel Ladue, who's been here many times. I'm sort of replacing Jewel Ledoux, who's been here many times, speaking about, uh, the weeds in Alba. And maybe I should say unwanted vegetation, because there's a problem with weed and weeds. So a little clarifying. You know, no matter how fancy your logo is, when people drive around Alba and they see weeds, they're not six-inch weeds, but six-foot weeds, they see all this crap all over people's yards, you know, like it's a yard sale, but it's there every day. Now, um, you know, how long is this going to continue in that? It used to be, it was kind of the streets of Choctaw and Santa Fe, that you might say, uh, those aren't so good. A few years ago, I took my nephew down one of those streets, and he'd been on a cruise, he'd been to Jamaica, and he said, "This is just like Jamaica. Do we really want our city to be compared to third world nation?" So I'm just bringing this before the council about what to do, do about this problem.
Well, let me address something that I was going to talk about here. I forgot to talk about during the, uh, my manager's report, that I do want, I wasn't going to bring up it during council remarks, but let me just bring it up here, because it's timely. Uh, one of the things that we are working to do on the city side is to change the way we, um, enforce our weeds and, tall weeds and grass ordinance. You know, we, uh, the way we have done it in the past, and it's worked with some moderate success, um, is to tell, to send people a letter telling them that they need to, uh, mow their lawn, or we're going to come and mow it for them, and then put their, uh, put the cost of that onto their add lawn tax, or their, um, their property taxes. That, over the past few months, has not been, uh, very, people have not been very responsive to that, and when that happens, I have to hire somebody to go mow the lawn, and then we put those costs onto the, um, as a lien on the property that may or may not get paid timely. Uh, so we, we, I've discussed this with the city attorney, and what we're going to, what we have started doing over the past couple of weeks is no longer will that letter say, uh, "You have 10 days to mow your lawn," which is what our ordinance gives. Uh, it allows, it allows 10 days for notification. It's not, we will no longer say, $10, "You have, uh, 10 days to, uh, get your yard mowed, but we're going to come mow it for you." Where that letter will read, uh, "You've got 10 days to mow your lawn, and you're going to get a $750 fine." Uh, if they do not respond within the 10 days, I will send the fleet, we will instruct the police department to go out and write a $750 ticket. That ticket, and each day constitutes a new offense. So if they don't mow their lawn in 10 days, we go out there on day 11, write them a $750 ticket. If they don't do that, day 12, we go write them another one, and hopefully we get their, we get their attention that we would like for them to maintain their lawn. Um, my, our goal is not to try to collect money, uh, through the fines, our goal is to try to have the, um, yard mowed. Uh, mowing lawns is not the city's responsibility, but it's the responsibility of the property owner. And we, this is our way of trying, you know, maybe they'll respond better this way than they have in the past.
It's, uh, you're absolutely right, and I don't know where, how things got to where they are, where people either, either don't take the pride in their properties, or they, you know, the neighbors don't get together and help each other out like they used to, or what, what, what things have come to, but I think it's just the, the days and time that we live in, that it's, the pride's not there, and the, the neighborhood support's not there either. And I, I don't, uh, we can't legislate, you know, sell pride in your own property. I, I mean, we can, I'm hopeful that this works, um, but there's no guarantee that this will work either.
Has, has it been effective in, for anybody, has anybody mowed their lawn because of?
Well, so far, there have been two letters that have gone out.
Oh, only two?
Yeah, so far. There have been two, both those yards have been mowed.
So, and I noticed that there have been some lawns mowed, uh, for the first time all year, and I thought, well, maybe the city was behind, but obviously it just is a coincidence.
Well, the two, the, the two that went out, I mean, I know, over the weekend, I noticed that they were mowed, they both did mow, to some degree. One of them's not done, one of them's not done the way it was intended to be done, and we'll have to address that. Uh, but the other one that I know of, that was, that I'm aware of, that went out, um, has been mowed, as mo, as far as I can tell.
And I think the $750 is going to work, because this morning I called, the, uh, house I was selling is up for sale, and the weeds are up to my, uh, up to my knees, and I'm pretty tall up to my knees.
And that's pretty short weeds.
Well, I'm just saying the grass was, the weeds were taller, but anyway. I called the company that, uh, was, uh, trying to sell this house, and I told her, I said, "You know, you're never going to get this house sold, because you can't see the house because of all the weeds." And I said, "I'm going to city council tonight, and our city council manager's going to talk about a $750 fine after 10 days, and it's $750 every day after that." And she said, "Oh, my goodness." And I said, "Well, don't you want to try to sell the house? Why would you put your advertisement in that yard and make it look so yucky? I mean, it's pitiful."
Yeah, it's not logical.
It's not, I mean, they don't want to sell the house, I guess. So at 1:00 today, there was a woman from Ena mowing that lawn, and they mowed it and got the weeds cut down, the majority of them. But, you know, I think the $750 is going to scare them.
Well, there's also the fact that people mow out in the street all the time, and that, you know, you think that that's kind of trivia, but that puts kind of a mulch in the street, and then pretty soon there's weeds growing, not only in the yard, but in the street.
Yeah.
You know, and that's a city ordinance, and you can see that quite easily.
But, you know, as we, for us to enforce that, we have to catch them doing it.
Oh, okay, I didn't really.
Yeah, it's, it's not just that we saw the weeds out in the yard.
Okay.
We have to catch them mowing the lawn and blowing it out into the street.
And, um, well, I've seen lawn care companies do that, and respectable people, you know, in the community, and they're out, you know, how hard is it to turn the lawn more the other way? Uh, maybe on some types of property now, I don't, I don't really know why they do it like they do it.
I'd like to say regarding the, uh, what I call perpetual garage sales. We're, I've spoken with Joe Don a couple of times on that, and we are looking for a solution. It's hard, it's a fine line between playing big brother and, because you can't just say you can't have a garage sale, or if you do a one to three day permit, and the guy walks in every one to three days and signs a new permit.
Or do they do that?
We don't have a permit at this time.
Oh, okay.
So that's kind of what we're, but then that would also require every single person that has a garage sale to walk into the city hall and get a permit, so it's, like I said, it's a fine line between trying to be big brother.
But you know, in towns, you have to have a permit to have a garage sale.
That's virtue.
You have to have a permit.
So, but we're, we're looking for solutions.
Well, it's going to be a hard road to get people to conform like they used to.
I think what helps, though, is you coming here, and then also the last couple of weeks with having articles.
Right.
That pressure to, you know, neighbors and.
That's why I'm, I'm hoping to start a revolution.
I'll go on your side.
I don't know, maybe it's the people wanting to go in.
Well, we, uh, we, we just want to know that when we do get the, because there will be pushback, uh, but we want.
Oh, yeah, for, yeah.
But we want to know that there's support for, for doing this kind of, these kind of measures, because it, it doesn't help our community to, to let things go.
No, well.
What about the empty houses that are crumbling and the weeds are high?
There's a whole separate legis, um, legislative, uh, process to demolish a house, um, and it's, it's lengthy and it's cumbersome, but we try to work it. Uh, we've had, um.
We've actually had some success the last couple of years.
The last couple, I think, we, I think, we, we budget to tear down five houses a year, uh, but we've had to, but through the work with the, um, inspector, um, we've gotten a lot of the, we've, we've gotten through the past two years without ever having to spend that money and having houses removed. Uh, there are, um, quite a few houses on that list, and it's just a matter of having the time to work them and, um, follow the process.
Right now, we're without a city inspector, so if you know anybody.
Yeah, our city inspector's last day is the 31st of this month, so, uh, we are advertising for that position.
Are there any other remarks or inquiries from citizens?
Possibly, if you get an application for an inspector, uh, maybe he could try and find the house next to my building that's behind a forest. Be a good candidate to be removed.
And we need those addresses, you guys, you need to send those in.
Okay, Jewel and I started, I've got them, some of them in the car, that we were driving around town, and so, but she got sick while we were working on the process of that.
Too much weed.
I don't know.
Like Kelly said, this, it, it's one thing for you guys to call a city council member down to the city manager and things like that, it's, it, it's so nice to have people come down and actually say it publicly on the public record, because that really helps us to know that there is support out there for these things.
A lot of people won't do this, because I had some other people lined up that, you know, have gotten with me, like, on Facebook, somebody posted something, somebody said something nasty, and then she took her post off, and it's like, "I don't care, I'm just going to say what I think, I don't care what they say to me." But anyway, who wants these addresses?
If you leave them here with me, we'll try to get them to me.
Okay, I'll bring them in, because we've got them started.
Any other remarks by citizens? Well, thank you all for being here, uh, and thank you for providing feedback. Item 21 is remarks and inquiries by council members.
Oh, yeah. I, uh, heard that the, uh, professional building, whoever, the lady you hired to clean, is doing a wonderful job. They are very, very happy with, with her. So that's a good, good comment to have received.
I'd like to commend the lights over Alba. That was, it was, it was a good turnout. I was set up over by the extreme handing out cookies to every college kid that passed, and I, I got rid of a lot of cookies. I had little bags of cookies, and I got rid of a lot of cookies, so I think it was a pretty good turnout. Really excited that stuff like that gets put on, and thank you, Alex and the chamber, and whoever else was a part of that project.
Any other remarks from council members? Thank you, and we will adjourn the city council meeting. And I need to take just a quick recess. For the utility authority meeting, will the clerk please call the robe?
Winters? Eckhart?
Yes, here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Stelling. Martin?
Here.
Sherman?
Here.
Hannaford?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
All right, item three, discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request it to be removed from the consent agenda in place for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of consideration and action on the following items. A, approval of minutes of the regular meeting of July 16, 2018, and B, approval of claims in the amount of $1,156,834.79 in payroll expenses of $106,781.26. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Sherman, seconded by Mr. Wallace, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes. Okay, item five is discussion and action to declare surplus and authorize the disposal of 2,000 model freightliner, VIN number 1FUYDSEB7YDF07832, which is no longer needed by the city of Alba.
Can you have that phonetically, please?
What is this?
Whiskey Tango Foxtrot.
This vehicle is, uh, a 2,000, again, a 2,000 model freightliner. Uh, the engine, it currently has a blown engine, it's not feasible to, uh, repair it, so we're asking it to be, uh, declared surplus, so we can use it for, uh, trade-in on the next agenda.
Motion to approve declaring surplus, authorize disposal of 2,000 freightliner, VIN number 1Foxtrot, uniform Yankee Delta Sierra, Echo Bravo seven Yankee Delta Foxtrot zero seven eight three two.
Second.
Nobody would know if he was right or wrong.
Actually, he would.
Oh, he would, yes.
He was right. Is that right? You're right. You're right.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Sherman, and seconded by Dr. Hannaford, to declare surplus and authorize the disposal of the 2,000 model freightliner. Any further discussion? Let's call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Wait until the crowd left.
We need a good laugh every once in a while.
All right, item six is, uh, discussion and action to purchase a one, uh, 2007 freightliner for the sanitation department in an amount not to exceed $25,500.
Okay, um, we have found a, uh, 2007 freightliner that will work for the sanitation department to replace the 2,000 model freightliner we just declared surplus. The cost on this vehicle, for the vehicle itself, is $25,000. We would get 12, the, uh, the 2007 freightliner would require a wet kit, uh, which would be an additional $1,700. This kit is, uh, needed for this vehicle, because it operates the, uh, compression, the trash compression on the, uh, trailer that we haul to the, uh, haul to Minam, where we haul our trash, and that is, the purpose of this vehicle is to haul our trash to Minam. Uh, we would get approximately, uh, $1,200 as a trade-in on the freightliner, the 2,000 model freightliner. Um, that, that would reduce the total cost to $25,500. It's estimated that to, so you know, it's estimated that the repair cost for the 2,000 model freightliner to, uh, rehab that engine is $25,000.
Twenty-five or twenty-two?
Twenty, $25,000.
Twenty?
Twenty, okay. But it, we felt that it was, um, better for the, uh, city of Alba to have a newer vehicle than it would be to. vehicle than it would be to try to rehab the older vehicle and still have an eighteen-year-old vehicle. So, we're asking to purchase the two thousand seven freightliner in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars.
Motion to approve the purchase of one two thousand seven freightliner not to exceed twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sherman, a second by Dr. Hannaford, to purchase a two thousand seven freightliner for the sanitation department in amount not to exceed twenty-five five. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
All right. We will adjourn the utility authority meeting, and we will call to order the economic development authority meeting. Clerk, please call the roll.
Winters? Eck, Eckhart?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Stelling? Martin?
Here.
Sherman?
Here.
Hannaford?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Item three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of routine nature normally approved at ADA meetings will be approved by one vote of the board. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda in place for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration action on the following items: A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of July sixteen, two thousand eighteen, and B, approval of claims in the amount of seventy-five thousand, five hundred twenty-five dollars and forty-two cents, and payroll expenses of twenty-four thousand, six hundred seventy-three dollars and eighty-three cents. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sherman, a second by Mrs. Hamilton, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
All right. Thank you all. We are adjourned.